Good evening, I'd like to call our regular scheduled school committee meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, December 10th. Time now is 6 o'clock. First order of business, we will be entering into executive session to continue discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and individual employees and the strategy we followed in our continued ongoing litigation. Once we adjourn our, we will adjourn our executive session at 6:30 and then we convene our regular scheduled meeting at that time. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make that motion.
That's second.
We have a motion of second to enter an executive session. Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Palamino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kettles, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's a four oh unanimous vote. We'll see you at 6:30. Thank you. Welcome back, good evening. Again, today is our regular scheduled school committee meeting. We're back from the executive session. Today is Wednesday, December 10th. Time now is just 6:30. At this time, we'd like to go right into our agenda. And first on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance, so I'd like to assault the stand.
The flag of the United States of America, into the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We are starting the meeting a little earlier today, we posted that, so our student representatives might be just a little late, so I'm going to pencil them in a little bit later. Tonight, we do have a presentation. It's our full day kindergarten community service survey draft and full day kindergarten report.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. We, as you know, we have established a full day kindergarten task force and we have had several meetings up to this point. We have a number of people who are here this evening. We have Mrs. Kenny, longtime kindergarten teacher at the Heathbrook School, welcome and thank you. Jan Fuller, currently the assistant principal over at the doing. And Liz Keely is a parent who's on the committee who stepped up and volunteered to try to put together a survey and she's going to come up to the computer here and walk us through a brief PowerPoint explaining where we've been, what we've been doing, and equally important, she's going to share with us the survey that we'd like to send out to the community. So Liz, thank you.
Sure.
And I know you're a little nervous about doing this, but we really appreciate you doing this.
I can do a presentation in my sleep.
There you go.
Not a problem. All right. So, just quickly, there's four, four subgroups, right, Dr. O'Connor?
Yes.
For the kindergarten task force. The one that I have been assigned taskmaster is customer survey subgroup. And that came out of the conversation at the first meeting in terms of my own background is in marketing and new product development. And I made the suggestion that doing a survey to the community will gather invaluable results that we can then incorporate into either the proposal or any sorts of conversations we need to have to really try to get the community behind this program. So, again, Jan Fuller and Tricia Kenny are on. We have, oh, Jan is here. And then we're missing to Jennifer Mullen and Dawn Stacey. So, the objective is to survey our community to determine the interest level for a tuition-free full day kindergarten program. Pretty straightforward. So, the key questions that we came up with that we want to have answered with this survey is what percentage of our community is in favor of a full day kindergarten program? Do parents fear, feel that their child is ready academically and emotionally? When we were doing a lot of this research trying to figure out what questions do we ask, what are parents concerned about, the academic and emotional readiness came up as a, as a big factor. So, we definitely want to incorporate that. And then, the question on whether or not parents feel that a full day program will help to better prepare their child for a first reading. So, scope and the format of the survey, keeping it simple, very concise. We've decided that the best format is going to be an electronic survey. We're going to use a website called Survey Monkey, if everyone is familiar with that. And what we're going to do is, a couple of different things. We're going to utilize the school's email database to reach out to parents that have kids in schools now. We're going to post the survey online, so at the school website. We're also going to reach out to the patch and the town crier. And I've already been in contact with a couple of the local preschools. Not all preschools, believe it or not, have email databases that they can forward the survey to. We can give them paper copies if they want, if we decide to, and they can put it in their kid's backpack. Or we can just send a brief note saying, please go to the website, you know, take a couple of minutes to, to take the survey. And then, we've also asked Dr. O'Connor to utilize the automated phone message system, just quickly asking parents to go to the website and take a couple of minutes to do the survey. So, the survey, like I said, in order to get the, the best results, we're really trying to keep it focused and keep it simple. So, the first three questions are pretty simple. I'm a parent or a guardian of a future kindergartner? I'm a parent or guardian of a child that's currently enrolled in the school district? Or, just simply, I'm a community member with no children in the schools? And this is important because it will allow us to analyze the data based on who's responding to the survey, so that we could say, you know, for example, 90 percent of the parents that have a future kindergartner, you know, are fully supportive of the full day kindergarten program, things of that nature. So, there are seven statements here. And what we're asking people to do is rate it on a scale of strongly disagree, although it does strongly agree. This is really the, the meat of the survey that I want to make sure everybody is on board with. Do you, Dr. O'Connor, do you want me to run through the survey questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, real quickly. And they're in no particular order and the order will change depending on when they get the survey, so we're not going to hopefully skew any of the results. But, first statement, I would like to express offer a full day kindergarten at no cost to all families. Second question, pretty straightforward. Full day kindergarten would contribute to greater academic success more than half day kindergarten? So, just to step back for a second, a lot of these questions were taken from surveys that have already been done, or adapted from surveys that have already been done. So, we're not trying to really reinvent the wheel or come up with tricky questions. It was from surveys that seem to have been pretty well. So, third question, full day kindergarten would enhance children's social development more than half day kindergarten? Strongly agree, strongly disagree. In general, children are ready for a full day program. There was some concern from the parents that, from the research that we did online, that they didn't think that their child was really ready, that they didn't have the stamina for a full day program. So, just throwing the question out there, get the results back and see what people are thinking. Next question, streamlining the kindergarten program to one full day, again, at no cost, is an important change that our community would embrace. So, next question, having the option to choose between two different programs is important. And then, lastly, we discussed in the, in some of the meetings that the tuition-based full day program becomes sort of a have versus have-not. So, addressing that issue, having a tuition-based program creates an unfair disadvantage for some children. So, if there's any thing that sort of raises a red flag, that says, I know that there were a couple of questions on the first draft that people were like, no, can't, can't ask that. So, that's, nope.
Any questions? Are you done? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, this is the, really the meat of it. So, if there's a question on that, but there's a couple more slides. So, lastly, it's just an open-ended chance for parents to comment, questions, something like that. And again, this, from my past experience, you get some great little tidbits and quotes from actual parents that are fantastic to use in the presentation when you're trying to educate people. So, that's it for the survey. In terms of timing and next steps, we're hoping to review and approve the survey by Friday. The following Friday, we'll do a trial run and we'll fine-tune. So, what we'll do is we'll send the survey out to maybe 15 or 20 people, have someone that hasn't seen it before take a look, and if anything, any questions are confusing or something's unclear, we can get that feedback and fix it before we roll it out. So, the week of December 22nd, we're hoping to get the survey out there. And then, we'll get the results back and we'll be able to analyze and report back on the findings by June right now. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from members? If you have, Dr. Palamino?
Just, I'd like to welcome Jen Malisi who arrived. She was also instrumental in getting this together. And we thank both Liz and Jen for their hard work. You know, the survey is simple, but the way they've structured the questions, you know, we think it will provide us with some very important data that we can present, whether it's to the finance committee, to the board of selectmen, to what's in the community, the town meeting, that there is support for kindergarten here in Tuxbury.
And there is a section at the end that you can put comments in.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you. Great job. I'd just like to fine-tune from our last meeting, we had a lot of discussion at the last subcommittee meeting on, and I think it's great, and I think it's simple, it's quick. It's not going to take somebody a long time to fill it out. And I think that's important, sometimes the surveys just go on and on and on. And I think that's great, I think your subcommittee did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Mr. Palamino?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the subcommittee. I think this is an absolutely wonderful idea because it gives the whole type of community feedback, exactly what the community is looking for and so forth. It helps us in our planning when we do capital improvements and moving forward, one year, three years, five years, seven years, whatever those goals may be. So, I thought the way it was set up was simple and excellent. Would there be, would there be a timetable, like, I know you have it right here, but on the survey itself, like, when they go on, let's say, needs to be filled out, or deadline is, I would assume it's going to be before the deadline?
Yeah, we'll, we're working with Dr. O'Connor to draft a cover letter, so we can put a deadline in, in the cover letter.
Perfect. I think it's great, excellent work. Thank you to the entire committee for putting this together.
I echo the same thing. I think it's a wonderful thing, and we'll get a lot of great data from that that we can use in the future. We really need that, so.
So, one other note on, on the Survey Monkey. Once we sign up to use this, it will be available to the schools for a full year. So, if there's ever anything else coming up that...
We want a survey...
It's so easy and it's really quick and, and simple, so it's kind of an advantage of the book.
And the cost, do you recall what the cost was?
Yeah, so for unlimited responses, it's $25.
That's awful. Yeah.
They have control to utilize.
I gave you cash. Send it off. It's very amazing. It's good, yeah.
We appreciate all the good info. Thank you very much for taking, for volunteering, all your time and coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow night and we're going to present it to the committee. We're also going to have a presentation by our business manager and Mr. Libby, Director of Finance, on what's the overall cost looking like to implement kindergarten. And that's based on our current staff, where they fall in terms of where their salaries and benefits come out of our budget versus out of the revolving account with the tuition from kindergarten, et cetera. So, we're going to look closely at that, so we'll have a much better understanding tomorrow night, what numbers we're looking at to, to implement this program. So, again, we'll see you tomorrow night and thank you. Great job. Appreciate it.
Okay. Right down into, anybody registered to speak tonight?
No.
Moving on, we're going to move right along to approval minutes with our clerk and Mr. Kettles.
Okay, I'll move first, like Mr. Chairman, the school committee minutes for the date of November 19, 2014, regular school committee meeting.
What second to add?
The motion of second to approve November 19, 2014, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. It's a four oh unanimous vote.
I'll move the November 19, 2014, executive session meeting minutes.
What second to add?
The motion of second to approve November 19, 2014, executive session minutes. All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. It's a four oh unanimous vote. Right down to submission and payment of bill, Mr. Kettles.
Yeah, thank you. Payroll, I move the payroll for the period ending November 20th, 2014, the amount of
What second to add?
There's a motion of second to approve payroll period ending November 20th, 2014, the amount of $1,165,781.17. All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. Four oh unanimous vote.
And I'll move the payroll for the period ending December 4th, 2014, the amount of
What second to add?
There's a motion of second to approve payroll period ending December 4th, 2014, the amount of $1,242,045.26. All those favors and ones saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. Four oh unanimous vote. Right to the consent agenda, is anything, any members wishing to move for discussion? Seeing whether we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
What second to add?
There's a motion of second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. Four oh unanimous vote. There's some time, right down to superintendent and staff reports.
We have about five minutes, so I would like to just quickly do my presentation. Do we think we can get through? All right. So, if you left a play breakfast rant, as you know, we have received the Treyon School is going to be piloting a breakfast program. There is a presentation of the grant funds here at 10:00 a.m. at the Treyon School on the 16th of December. School committee members are invited to attend. So, anybody who thinks that they can attend, the dictators coming from the state and elsewhere would like a list of any of the elected officials who are going to be here. So, it's on December 16th, I believe that is a...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
What time would it be?
10:00 a.m. Mrs. Palamino says she might be able to attend? Great.
You can swing it.
All right. Good. Yeah. It's going to be a great event for the, for the school.
Just leave the palm in the mouth for a moment.
Yep, she's the only one right now.
Okay.
And then, I would like to recognize the Treyon School. They were very generous in helping to support a family that has, has become in need of a lot of support. They held a hat day, was a fundraiser that you could pay to wear a hat for the day. They raised $738 between the faculty and the students, and that money was donated to this family. And we're very appreciative of the generosity of the community of the Treyon School. National Honor Society breakfast was scheduled for our delayed morning on Tuesday, so we have rescheduled that for next Tuesday, December 16th at 8:00. Again, people are invited to, to attend that breakfast. It's a nice introduction for our National Honor Society. I wanted to let everyone know, and I will be sharing this in a letter with the community, that I have appointed Ron Druin. Ron is a middle school, I'm sorry, the Ryan School Physical Education teacher. He is going to be taking over the athletic director and facility coordinator position for a period of time. Time, the length is unknown, but Ron's going to be stepping in and taking over that. And I, as I said, I will be getting a letter out to the community. This is the time of year when there are lots of activities going on in schools. I would encourage parents to make sure they check their school calendar to see about the various activities. And I understand there are a number of parents at the Treyon or Heathbrook School who are concerned about the change in the music schedule, that did not have all of the great clubs participating in holiday concerts. I will apologize to parents, perhaps we could have done a better job communicating this earlier on, but that change was made after a number of issues arose last year, and at least the principals felt it was in the school's best just to make that change. And I, again, I will apologize to parents for not communicating that well. Tomorrow, both Mr. Lyons, Mr. Libby and I will be attending a bomb threat assessment training in North Reading, and I'm hoping that there will be at least one representative of the Tuxbury Police Department in attendance. We talked about that today. And I, this is just a continuing effort to bolster security here in the district. And that leads into my next item that we just finished this, last week, training all of our professional staff, that's all of our educators, on the ALIS protocols. We are now turning our attention to training custodians, secretaries, aides, central office personnel, and everybody else in the school district that, that we feel should be trained. We hope to have that all done by mid-January, and then we will be preparing to run full-scale drills at the high school and possibly at the wind as well before the end of the school year.
Prior to the drill, we'll be educating our students on the new protocols, as well as parent information will like coming up in February.
Yeah, when you'll hear more of that, we're going to do a community-wide parent information to talk about the training that we've done and to walk them through what a drill is going to look like. So, that's going to be, we said we've established that date for early February. And then, just to make you aware, although this is not until March 5th at 7:00 p.m., we have scheduled a joint meeting with the finance committee to review our budget at that time. Sherry's going to, in just a second, I'll have Sherry walk you through a budget timeline that she has put together for you, that talks about various dates and activities. And why don't we break, it is about 5:00 of, and we'll come back, and Sherry will walk us through that. Brenda, Mrs. Reagan will do her report, and then we can jump right into the meat of the meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to break.
I'll make that motion to break for the recognition of the Abigail Adams Awards.
Is there a second?
A second.
Yep. We have a motion of second to break for the Abigail Adams Awards, John Abigail Adams recognition at 7:00 p.m. All those in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed. That's four unanimous. We will come back if we convene and finish up our superintendent's break. Welcome back, everybody. We just had a great recognition of our 2014 John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. It was fantastic turnout, great, a lot of parents and a lot of kids, so tremendous success for Tuxbury. We're going to continue with our superintendent report, Dr. O'Connor, and just go right over to you.
Sure. I, we just, I believe I was, I had one other item that we needed to share with you. Tonight, we are broadcasting on both Comcast and Verizon, with some new hardware that we installed here that we will hope will improve both sound and picture quality. I know that that has been an issue ongoing since we moved into this building. We have brought in some consultants to help us with it, including getting feedback from both Comcast and Verizon. We recently installed a Vidium broadcasting system, which is very similar to what the Con is using to broadcast their board of selectmen meetings. So, we're hoping we have positive feedback from the community after tonight's meeting. After that, Sherry, would you like to talk about the schedule?
Sure. I passed around, it's more of like a budget timeline for you, kind of where we've, what we've done so far and what we plan to do. So, if you take a look at it, where we are right now is the principals have passed in their initial budgets for non-fixed items. So, I'll be sitting down with the superintendent, we'll kind of go over everything. And our plan is to have, before we have our school committee meeting in January, we're going to have like a preliminary budget sent out to the school committee. We'll have a preliminary budget, an initial budget sent out to the finance chair and the finance committee. And then, on January 28th, we plan on having a budget workshop held here at 6:00 p.m. February 11th, we'll have our first public hearing. And then, if you flip it over onto the back, on March 5th, Dr. O'Connor had mentioned that we will be having a special FinCom meeting that night. And then, March 24th, we'll have our second public hearing. And then, on May 4th, is our annual town meeting, in which we'll present and hopefully get approved what we have presented. Does anyone have any questions about the timeline or anything that you want changed?
Just please note that those are tentative dates, and if the committee at any time feels as though they need more time to look at, we can, we can put together additional dates depending upon where we are in the process and what, any, any curveballs that might be thrown at us that would need a little more public review, we're more than willing to schedule meetings.
Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing I would like to mention, and I will pass this around, paving at strong field, these are some before and after pitches. We have put down the first binder coat. The second binder coat will be done in the spring once it gets warmer. But, once you look through those pitches, it looks fantastic down there. And from what I understand, it can fit approximately 80 cars down there now. And it kind of went all the way around to the other dugout. So, you'll see, I kind of put them in a way that this was before, this was after, this was before. I just wanted to let you know that that, the first half of it is done.
When is that scheduled to be completed?
Um, once the weather gets warm, probably April, they'll come back in. It's fine to drive on, it's just binder coat, but they'll come back in and put the second permanent coat down.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mrs. Reagan?
Well, I think in the pack that you had a, an update to our 2015 park and MCAS testing date schedule. We've cleaned that memorandum up a little bit and have since posted it onto our website. So, I think if you look, it's, it's very succinct and easy to read. You can see, working together with the principals, we've taken that three to four week testing window and pared it down to all ninth, third through 11th grade park and MCAS testing will be taking place for the ELA and the PVA, that's the performance-based assessment, during the week of March 23rd to 27th. The science is identified as the exact two days, and this is the grades by the name of May 5th and 6th. And then, if you look into the spring for our 10th grade math, and then our third through eighth, ninth, and 11th park end-of-year test, we've identified the week of May 11th through 15th. So, it's somewhat of a tedious challenge, I would say, putting all of the testing timetable together, especially at the high school. But, we thought it would be helpful to parents if they could identify that one week. And, and we will disrupt education, the educational program unless, when it's all during the same week. The challenge is upon us now to make that work, but we think, think we'll have that in order. If anything, at the very least, we may see a change in the schedule at the high school during that week of testing with ninth, 10th, and 11th testing. But, we'll continue to work with the high school to make sure that all students are least disruptive.
Thank you.
Okay. So, again, this, this new timetable is posted to the website, and I'm sure though the question on your mind is after just celebrating 60-plus students getting the John and Abigail Adams scholarship, is, does this affect on this new testing schedule? And it does not. Not because the Abigail Adams tuition scholarship is based on our ninth and 10th grade MCAS. Those tests aren't changing. So, that scholarship that we recognized today will still be in effect until those tests are, some set it in, I think, 2018.
Okay. Mrs. Palamino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I assume what's going on the website, you just said, is there any way we can make sure that we notify parents that we would appreciate them not planning vacations and taking kids out of school during the testing dates? Like, even though we put it on the website, not everybody goes to our website. I think we could somehow get a memo out every school with their individual testing dates to the parents so they can put those on the calendars. That'll help with some of our, you know, with our testing and keep it smooth and streamlined.
Sure. We'll do.
And then, on, just on a final note, I want to draw your attention to the consent agenda. The Heathbrook-Treyon Pack have a donation of instructional support materials of approximately the dollar value of $2,500. And we would certainly like to thank the Heathbrook and Treyon Pack, the community for the support that they have extended to their school. That's a very generous donation. And that's in line with what our packs do across the district on a regular basis.
Thank you. Is that it, Dr. O'Connor?
That is it.
All right. So, we're going to just, we're going to ask grades to give our, the student update.
Yep. So, that's from Tuxbury Memorial High School. The International Club has a tree display at public library. The ornaments are flags from as many countries as they can find, and they were able to fit "May Peace Prevail on Earth" written in a number of languages. The field trip to the Museum of Arts on Monday was lovely, and Ms. Dudley received a letter, a thank you letter about how great our students are, and I'd like to read that now. She, the lady from the museum said, "Thank you for bringing the students to the MFA. They were wonderful. I enjoyed spending time with them and I really appreciate..." I enjoyed spending time with them, and I really appreciated their engaged looking. I also heard great things from other instructors about their groups. You must be so proud of these students." And back to my report. The student council is collecting items for the charity drive and they're preparing for Administrator's Day on January 9th. We will be attending Nemask on Friday, a conference for student councils in northeastern Massachusetts. The conference will be run by Nemask president, Tewksbury's own Dan Hurley. National Honor Society tutoring is on Tuesday afternoons and Friday mornings in the library. The Codes for Kids and Toys for Todds drives are both going on until December 23rd. Echo is preparing for the Winter Wonderland on the 13th of December, and Blood Drive. Senior class council is selling merchandise and looking into doing candy grams. Tolerance Corps, the Gay Straight Alliance is using the month of December to honor Octavia St. Laurent, an advocate for transgender rights in the 80s. They're also planning a timeline for the LGBTQ community to put up in the school. Freshman class council is thinking about running a movie night for all ages at the high school in late December or early January. And DECA, the fashion show is a success. They raised over $3,000 for the Megan McCarthy Research Fund. And now Duck is preparing for their state conference that is coming up in January. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Reagan, as always. Thank you very much for that update.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the agenda and move next up under new business, item 16B. Tewksbury Memorial High School Vassu Cheerleading Squad request to attend a national championship competition, Walt Disney World, February 6th through the 10th, 2015.
There's a motion, one second.
One second, Ted.
All who participate, if others saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye for, and it's opposed. So we're going to bring up, under new business, Dr. Connor, item B.
Sure. You have two letters in front of you, one from Kristen Vogel, principal of the high school, and the second from Kim Dougherty, who happens to be out here in the audience with her adoring team. In fact, they look familiar, weren't they just here at our last meeting? They have a request for an out-of-district overnight field trip. Those field trips, as you know, come to the school committee for approval, given the work that Ms. Dougherty has done with local tour group to arrange for tickets, hotels, and the fact that the students will be competing in nationals. Are you not really excited to get down to Florida? Mrs. Vogel has supported this, and we're very excited to have our team be selected and to achieve, not necessarily selected, but to have achieved this incredible honor. Although I was very disappointed to see Drake it in the paper. Was it tonight? What happened? What? We should have been in there.
They're all girls, that's all right. We'll let it slide.
So we did recognize our group last, at our last meeting, for winning the regional areas championship here for the first time. And I, I have to tell you, I walked out after watching the students here that night, they were all very excited. But it was more heartwarming for me to watch the coach, who I think shed a tear or two at the, at the recognition, when we read the proclamation about how hard the kids have worked and how hard she has worked with them to achieve this. So it was a tremendous one. I'm hoping that you would support this. We think it's a great opportunity for our students to get on, showcase their talents. And who wouldn't want to go to Florida in February?
We're enjoying a nice stretch of, nice weather today. Do we have a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to give our approval to the Tewksbury Memorial High School Vassu Cheerleading Squad to attend the national championship competition, Walt Disney World, February 6th through the 10th, 2015.
One second, Ted.
So we have a motion, a second, to approve the request for the TMHS Vassu Cheerleading Squad to attend national championship competition, Walt Disney World, Orlando, Florida, February 6th through the 10th. All those in favor, signature five by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. It's a four-wheeling unanimous vote. Good luck.
And then I'll be thanking our students for coming out this evening, but thank all the parents for coming out, supporting our great kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're looking forward to it. Bring all the ribbon.
All right. So we're going to, to be great, thank you very much. We're going to go right down to our committee reports. Assistant building committees.
There's nothing to report tonight. Our next meeting is in February. The only thing I'm looking for is that the scoreboard electrical is in and operational, and the only work left to be done in the spring is just some site work and some landscaping area around the scoreboard. It is ready to go.
Excellent, thank you. From the Green Committee, there's nothing to report. I know they do have a meeting tomorrow night, so the Green Committee will be having a meeting tomorrow night. Tewksbury Education Foundation, they did have a meeting, but nothing to report at this time. And then the Tewksbury Special Ed Path Executive, Mr. Francis, I don't know if you do attend that?
Yes, I do. Basically, what we've done, Mr. Chairman, is we've elected new officers to the, to the subcommittee. Lisa Pucher is the chair, and Brianna Kuhlbe is the vice chair. And we're looking on more ways to streamline the committee, looking at agenda items that are more pertinent and to getting up and running again. And the next meeting is scheduled for next month.
Thank you.
And on that Green Committee, you had asked that we send a letter to the chair. Mrs. Johnson, did you draft that letter to the chair? That'll be going off tomorrow morning with my signature.
Appreciate it. All right. Anything, nothing else to add? So we don't have any policies, changes, or doctrines tonight, so we're going to go right to old business. Item A, I know Dr. Connor mentioned the superintendent report about the universal ISDN.
Yeah, this is, this is a little, little different. We had noticed from Comcast that they are, have launched a program to help bring low-cost internet to families that might be financially struggling. So we are going to be looking into this to see how we might be able to help some of our families here in Tewksbury access internet services at a reduced cost. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you. And then I know, sorry, we just did a ISDN update, so we'll jump out of old business. There's no more comments on that. Into new business.
Yeah, a little unusual, a request for field trip, again, out-of-district and overnight, but this is for 2016. I talked about getting there or in the water. They want to start ramping up for '16, even though '15 has not been completed. Our membership is down somewhat this year from last year on the number of students who are interested in the trip. Now, that could be a reflection too, but we have smaller class sizes coming in, so we really should look at it from a percentage. But they just want to make sure that we're looking at 2016, and we're going to be working with the tour operator to see if we can perhaps make the tour itself more attractive to kids. So they're looking for your approval, I'll need a voice vote. And certainly we can come back and visit this a year from now.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the table?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Do you have a motion, a second, to approve the Wind Middle School 8th grade, Washington, DC overnight trip request for April 2016? All those in favor, signature five by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. It's a four-wheeling unanimous vote. Right down into new business C, we got some information from the Commonwealth in Massachusetts on...
A grant. This was not a good news memo from the Commonwealth, but I am going to let Mrs. Matthews sort of explain what she did that will, I think, help us accept this memo in a different way.
I got a phone call from Mr. Ron Honesty, who's the grants management administrator, and he said, "Did you see my memo yet?" Which had gone to Dr. O'Connor, and I hadn't seen it yet. And he said, "Well, you heard about NC cuts?" And I said, "Yes," and we talked about regional transportation. And he said, "Well, you know those two grants that you got awarded, which the first one was the Campahilo grant, and the second one was the library grant?" And he said, "Well, the Campahilo grant, you've already requested all the money. We can't do anything about that." But they wanted to take back at the $18,000 out of the $20,000 library grant. And I pretty much said, "No, no, no, you can't do that. We've already spent that money." And I said, "I noticed this morning that the window opened up, but then I had heard his voicemail, so I hesitated." And he said, "Well, the window's open. Why don't you put it in and see what you can do?" And he said, "Is there anything that you haven't used yet?" And going through, there was a piece, because the follet system that we got was a little less expensive than we thought it was going to be. So I went in and I immediately requested $15,549, and it went through. He said, "Let's see if it goes through." He wasn't sure if it was going to, and it did. So basically, we lost $2,451 overall out of this grant, but we saved $15,000 of it by me getting him on the phone and just kind of grabbing the money as soon as we could before they took it from us. Which is wonderful, because we did get the follet system, the new Destiny system. It, I believe this week, it might have been today or yesterday, they were kind of setting it all up. We have, we've had the technology department, as well as different departments within the schools, working together to implement the system. And the last one we will be implementing is the Wind School, and they have a very old spectrum system. But follet is going to take that system, kind of devise it into Destiny, and we'll be able to use that. Any questions?
No, sorry.
I have no more.
Any questions, feedback? Yeah, Mr. Francis said, "Joe, I'm getting on the phone. It's too bad we lost some of that money, but we really keep that up. Thank you very much for extra effort." All right, another, another informational piece, Commonwealth, Massachusetts Health Survey.
Yes, I bring this to your attention. We do participate in statewide surveys, health surveys routinely. This particular survey will be administered to students at the Wind Middle School. I, again, bring it to your attention, because the questions that are on here are what I believe are well beyond our middle-school age, whether or not they're involved in this kind of behavior. However, we do know that drug and alcohol use is a growing problem for students at younger ages. This is a survey that talks about personal safety, drug and alcohol use, questions about how they feel. These are very, very challenging questions, and I know from administering this both here in this district and in my previous district, I'm sure we're going to have parents who will call and ask why we are administering this type of survey to middle school. But the data tells us, we do have kids in the middle school who are exhibiting riskier behavior and demonstrating that at a much younger age. So this survey helps not just us here in the Tewksbury schools, but it helps policymakers, government officials, public health officials, in establishing programs, policies, and practices throughout the Commonwealth. So I want to make you aware of this.
And it is anonymous, and it is also aligned to the health curriculum, that while all students are not participating in dangerous behavior, it is part of the health curriculum to educate them on that. So it's very much aligned, and again, I have to say, anonymous, no student is identified on it.
So there might be some feedback from the community, this is something that we have to do.
And we've done before, and we've done this at the Bryan School level. We do this annually at high school level, and it comes through by us every now and again, every one middle school.
All the parents are notified?
Yes, yeah.
Through the middle school?
Yep.
Okay. Any other feedback? All right. So now we move, it looks like we, just an informational piece about the emergency management plan, our district is part of that?
Yes, I met the other day with representatives from Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. This particular group deals with the potential of a disaster with the Seabrook Nuclear Pilot Wing. Tewksbury has been identified as a host community. We have been for probably the last 15, 20 years. If there were an emergency that necessitated an evacuation of schools from that area in Massachusetts that is south of Seabrook, Salisbury, Newbury, Newburyport, Amesbury, a lot of those communities' schools have been assigned to area schools in our area. Those students would be transported here. They'd go through several checks before they arrive, and then we would be responsible for housing those students for as everyone, as it took to get those students back with their families. I just wanted to make you aware of it, that we are part of this broad plan and have been for many, many years. We do meet on a regular basis, and I believe every three to four years, we actually sit down administratively with Mina representatives and go through tabletop exercises, which we did, I believe, a year ago or two years ago, and we had very high rating on our preparedness for them.
This is the Wind Middle School?
Both Wind and the high school would be used, yes.
Is there anything that we have, we have to do each year to maintain anything?
Yeah, review. They come in, and they, they basically update documents, which they've done. We go over any changes that we've done. They identify specific needs that we might be aware of in terms of food and staffing and those sorts of things. So we're good on it.
Thank you. Next item is a good piece of news, right? The collaborative for high-performance schools?
Yes. You have that memo in front of you?
TMHS.
From William Org, executive director, that we did achieve the, the status of a high-performing school, which I believe helps us with our certain percentage reimbursement, 5%.
Additional reimbursement.
That will be coming to us, that certainly is a real benefit for the community. That's less money that we're raising in taxes, that'll cover the cost of the new school. So we were pleased to see that we achieved that. This will be passed on to the building committee as well.
Okay, great. And our next piece, I know that we've been working hard, meeting with Mr. Montori on our future budget, and this is a message, message from him?
Yes. This went to all the department heads. I met with Tom Manager Montori last week, who provided me with the copy. I've sent that to you. I've also sent a copy to all of our principals and directors, so they're aware of the strengths, the areas of emphasis that we're looking to target this coming year, and that has been distributed. And, you know, we'll be using this as sort of a guiding document as we work into the budget process.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions on that? Excellent. Our next item, I know there's a proposal on the table for a part-time phys ed teacher at the high school in the spring of 2015. Is that something we're going to, we're going to discuss at this point? Is there a presentation for that?
No, we have some documents, and we're going to give you some background information and give you a chance to weigh in on this.
In the school year 2013, '14, and now we underwent the coordinated program review, and in the spring of 2014, the department gave us corrective actions that we had to come up with a plan for. And one of those areas under civil rights, seven days, structured learning time, that we were out of compliance, you might say, is that the district must propose a plan to update its policy regarding the requirements for 11th and 12th graders to participate in physical education as a part of graduation requirement. Now, the way our program is structured now, students take two full years of health and wellness in ninth grade, two full years in 10th grade. So they were meeting the four years of the physical education requirement. However, the department is requiring us to now place some of that physical education into the 11th and 12th grade. Under Ms. Bradley's attendance last spring, she put forth a corrective action that we provide a waiver for our 11th and 12th graders if they participated in a junior varsity or varsity sport, that they would be exempt. That's where you had to meet certain requirements, 45 hours and what have you, that they could be, get a waiver from participating in a quarter of physical education in 11th grade and then again in 12th grade. And the department went along with that, and now they're taking it one step further in requiring that we also have an alternative physical education class. So we're meeting the requirement for this school year, I mean, for this semester. We need to put less than something for the second semester to meet the requirement of phys ed for our juniors and seniors.
So the proposal is for a part-time teacher for the...
to meet the requirement, phys ed for our juniors and seniors.
So the proposal is for a part-time teacher for the remainder of the year? A teacher, part-time in terms of, we're looking at it for the second semester, correct?
Second semester. And what would happen is, right now, we have approximately 15% of our juniors and seniors who have not met the requirement through a waiver. Only 40 in each grade level, which is very good. But what that means is those 40, we have to come up with a plan. If we have a part-time phys ed teacher, that teacher could teach a term, not a full semester, but a term of physical education to those AP students and those that could not fit it into their schedule because we don't want to disrupt any junior senior who perhaps has a full boat of AP or honors classes. We would like to have them participate. There's two things they could do. They could participate in a local gym and get a sign off that they're participating in physical activity and they're attending the gym. That's one way they could do that. We could also have an after-school, for example, physical fitness or walking club or something that addresses lifetime physical fitness.
Weight room, you know, setting up a plan in our weight room. Number of different things we're looking at to ensure that our, particularly our seniors during this credit and have the requisite credits for graduation.
Can you do that, Mr. Palomino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're saying there's 40 students in 11th and 12th grade that this kind of impacts, or 40 between?
Approximately 40 in each grade.
Because that's AP.
Yes, AP overall.
So have we notified those students and families? And they're well aware of how this has changed and impacted?
We have. In fact, that's also a part of the requirement is that we have to rewrite our graduation requirements for the 2015-16 school year and make that, put that into the course catalog, which we're already, we've already drafted.
And so that's great. I'm so happy that we're addressing that and we're being, you know, proactive right now. What happens to, so the freshmen will be okay because we could realign how they're doing. What happens to the sophomores this year that are going to be in the same vote? Because they would have taken a freshman and sophomore year, right? So...
So we're not, that piece won't change because we still need the wellness portion. But we need to look forward at implementing more physical education electives or opportunities for our upperclassmen in the following school year.
Okay, so that's what I was going to say. So you'll do the same thing? Because I'm assuming the freshmen will be okay because they could then go junior, senior, not do it their sophomore year. But the sophomores are going to be in the same vote as the students are today and then? So we'll have something in place for those sophomores. So in case some of those students want to be more academically challenged rather than taking, you know, a wellness or, there'll be, I love the idea of having some after-school programs or even some evening programs because not all those students may participate in junior varsity or varsity activities as juniors and seniors.
Right, so I think those options, all those options would be available in the next year. But we need to make sure that we have opportunities during the school day as well as after. And I will also say that any student, junior or senior now who is in an internship program for the second semester, half of that internship can stay and half of it would be participating in, if we should get this substitute part-time phys ed teacher, half of it would be in any school class and half in the internship. We don't want to disrupt anybody in an academic class and pull them out of that. So that would be the after-school option.
So you say they could get a waiver, like if they joined a gym, like Tuck Space Sports Club or something like that?
They had the director of the gym logging them in and signing off that they were doing those hours.
How many hours a week would they have to go?
It's a minimum of 45 hours of physical activity that we cover the...
The whole term, right, okay. Did you get a gender breakdown, like, is it mostly?
I don't have a memory of that.
So we're asking, we're asking to hire an individual from the start of the second semester through the end of the year. We will be looking at the budget process of, if we feel as though we need a full-time person, we would put that in as part of our budget request going forward for the school year 16. Okay, so we're just looking for money through now. Because we're going to look at, A, the program, how effective it is. Are we getting the kids? Are they getting the credits? And B, we're going to look at our existing resources. Do we need to hire another physical education teacher full-time? Or do we only need a half-time and some of our existing staff can pick up some additional classes? So we want to take a closer look at that. We just know we got this delivered right now with 40, in particular, 40 seniors. We need to get that done. We cannot do it with our existing staff at high school. If we started pulling people out of our other buildings, it'd be very disruptive at this time of year. This makes sense. Mrs. Matthews indicates that we have funding available to do this. So I'm confident that this is a win-win for us and for our students.
I thought we were going to be able to exempt our seniors this year, but that's not the case. And in fact, there's one other option that we do have available. I don't, if you recall, last spring, we introduced the possibility of online course product called Edge Newity. Edge Newity, in fact, has a health and fitness bundle. And perhaps because we have just a few seats to pilot for this spring, as we said we would do, and then come back and tell you if Edge Newity was the program we wanted to look at at credit recovery. They do have a health and fitness bundle that may just work also for some of our seniors or students that are so locked in to the schedule they're currently in that they have no wiggle room.
Paulino?
So Dr. Conne, the only question I have is, what is the dollar amount that you're placeholding for this position? So is there a certain threshold or, you know, you say that you know that there's money in our existing budget. So what is the range?
It was under $30,000. It was in that 20, we'll say $25,000 range.
And that's how that position will be advertised? Okay, excellent, thank you.
That position would have benefits and...
Not this, no. We're bringing it in as a, as it's basically an interim, long-term substitute type of a position.
Okay. Any other questions?
But we will be looking for someone with certification in the physical education, hopefully, while we're serving.
Thank you.
Make a motion, is that it?
I'll make a motion to accept a recommendation to hire a part-time.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion is second to, on the proposal to hire a part-time physical education teacher at Tucksmore High School for the spring of 2015. It's going to require a roll of all votes. Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Palomino, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Callis, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It's a four-wheeling unanimous vote. Thank you.
We talked about the AQUILY Technologies.
Yep.
We recently approached AQUILY Technologies to come in and review the technology platform here at the high school. You have a very detailed report from them. I return your attention to page three of 35, the executive summary. It reads, "The high school has a very advanced technology environment. They have modern equipment, which has been installed and configured professionally, well-designed wire and wireless networks, and have invested wisely in hosting certain applications, i.e. email, in the cloud. In particular, the implementation of the virtual desktop infrastructure and Arrow Hive wireless networking combine to form a very robust and high-performance backbone for devices, device agnostic connections from the internal network, wired or wireless, or from home. This allows students and employees to connect to their VMware, view desktops from anywhere, using whatever device they choose, a laptop, desktop, iPad, Android tablet. And they have the same experience, in my experience, this is a top-notch deployment." So overall, the report was very, very favorable of the quality of work and the materials that went in to create the backbone of our network here at the schools. They did raise some concerns, primarily around the area of security. We have since approached AQUILY to give us some pricing on what they think we would need to create a more secure environment. And we will be getting that report here shortly.
We'll keep this meeting with them next week.
And we will be bringing it back to the committee for review. But I did want to put this in just to let people know that this is a very strong environment, a technology environment here at the high school that works exceptionally well whether you're here or you're accessing it remotely from home. It's a great system. And as a result, we're having kids using their devices all over, from home, in school. We saw Grady, who's been using his phone to do his report for them. And that's all because he's able to access his wireless network right here through his phone. And that's all I have, any questions?
Yep, this's Paulino.
So Dr. Conne, I thought that was excellent, that they went in and did a review, especially since this is a new environment. We're still learning, you learn every day. They did put in some suggestions, those things that...
Well, that's what we're getting pricing on. Those suggestions deal with additional equipment or software that would need to be upgraded or installed new. And that's what we're looking. Again, we want to create a secure environment as possible. And if they think there are some fixes out there that would help us do that, we're going to bring that to you and see if it's within our price range.
So when I read it, some of the suggestions were the way we, some maybe decisions that we've made?
Passwords, all of those things.
So is that something?
We changed the password. We talked to the tech director the other day, and we're changing the way it is and we're changing how long somebody has before they have to change it.
Right.
So I guess the other concern it raises for me, is there any way, or do we need to get additional training for, this is so robust, for our staff, our IT staff? Because it is quite sophisticated. So is there things that we can do besides looking at how we're configuring? Are there things that we can do to bring in additional training for our staff?
They have training in their budget.
Yeah, we send them out with training on all of this. You know, when they put, before they put in the wireless networks in the schools, they were trained on, you know, how to do that, how to manage the systems. And they're doing a great job with it right now, I believe. Our systems, all of our wireless networks are working in all of our schools. You know, and, you know, three years ago, we had only a wireless network here. Now we have them in all of our schools. So we've done exceptionally well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for new business. School committee, trans, Mr. Callis.
I have nothing to add.
I only have one thing tonight, Dick. On the morning of Thanksgiving morning, I attended the BAN's tailgate year at the high school. And it was a great success. Mr. Walsh, especially the BAN parents and boosters did a great job. And it was good to see BAN members from past years coming back to attend that one. It was a great event, thank you.
Great event, Mr. Francis. And I don't have anything to add. Future school committee meetings, January 14th, January 28th. So this will be the last meeting of 2014. So we have two in January, and we have one scheduled on the 11th of February. High school building committee, February 2015. You can check that out. Any future agenda items? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Make a motion to adjourn is second. All those in favor, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed. Four-wheeling unanimous vote. Thank you for attending and happy to hear.